I want to order the Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, December 18th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here, please stand up pleasantly.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, public participation. We recognize that the value of school governance is public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing its members of the public to express themselves on school matters of interest. At the board meeting, the public participation committee has determined following rules. The portion of the meeting for the participation shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register intentions to participate on the signing sheet about 30 minutes prior to the meeting. They may not register other speakers to speak, and no speaker may speak more than one time. Participants must first be recognized by the commanding officer, and will be requested to preface their comments with the announcement of your name and whether the participant is a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement made by the participant may and shall be limited to three minutes or less. Usually, the board does not speak, but generally, we will refer matters onto the superintendent that need to be followed up. Looking for the list of speakers. First speaker, Kimberly.
Hi, Kimberly. Kimberly Liston Lake. I am a teacher at Weller Elementary. Been there for 26 years, and loved every minute of it. I'm looking at the light at the end of the tunnel. I don't know when, but I want to be here, and I want our teachers to be here. And so, my question, or my plea really is, let's go back in March. Give our teachers a chance. Give our staff a chance to help with this level, to really put forth effort and be with you, link us with you, to get this stuff passed. We, I think if we go back in March, it's the best chance we have. You don't know. I'm hopeful that we will pass it, but if we wait until November, we'll never know. We've got to give it a shot. And so, my idea is, please, please, please consider option A, and going back in March, and then get with us, teachers, get with the staff. We are committed to helping, and we've taken things off of our list of things. We're strapping, you know, tightening our belts as well. And we're okay with not having field trips. We like it, you know? Because we know it's important to be there. But we're all working very hard to make sure that we have successful time before, and we're going to need our teachers. And we're going to need to keep as many as we can. Thank you for saying sometimes, we might need to add teachers. We can't always hope for attrition all the time, but, you know, I just want you to really think about how not in March, option A would impact any future level.
Thank you. Paul.
Good evening, Paul Sackjack, Washington, Housley. Speaking for me and Violi. I had prepared remarks, and I shelved them. My concern is, I don't want to see any teachers lose their jobs, and we recognize that 90% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So as you anguish over all these possible reductions, my question is, what is the certificated staff, and the senior staff, and the support staff willing to do to save jobs? Are they willing to make concessions so that 35 teachers' jobs are not on the line? Are they willing to make some concessions so that we only are looking at 25 people? I mean, it seems like the goal is, everything I have belongs to me, and you cut what you got to cut. When you look at these reductions, and I don't know your labor contract as well as you guys do, but with the bumping and the, you're going to be taking, including the youngest people and leaving the most senior people, which means you're going to be leaving the greatest cost, the 90%. So, I think the real solution to this thing is, recognize that you have deficit spending. Spend the money. Go until November, and sit down and do a comprehensive package that's not a knee-jerk reaction, and know, hey, maybe we don't need 135 class selections. Maybe we only need 100. Maybe we don't need all the extra seats, or if we offer them, maybe they should be funded by the parents who want their children to take these extraordinary classes that aren't part of the mainstream. So I think there's a lot to be done. I think we can save all of the positions. I think we can keep a quality product, but I don't think we can do it by knee-jerk reaction and say, we're going to put this on the ballot in March. Because I don't think you really understand, people didn't vote against the school district. They voted their pocketbook. And the pocketbook isn't going to change in March. You might know a little bit more, but you're not going to know where you are in March. And my opinion is, this is going to go down in the queue again. You can't communicate enough, because it's a pocketbook issue. I don't know of anybody that would say, I want to cut the staff. I want to lessen the quality of the education. Everybody wants that. But I think your challenge, as a board, is to figure out what you can do to maintain everything we have, and do it cost-effectively. March is not the answer to that. That's a knee-jerk reaction. You're fumbling on what you're going to do. Maybe it's some retirements, maybe it's cuts, maybe it's just maybe, maybe, maybe. Come up with some reductions, and then put that in for the voters in November, and get it approved. Because if it fails in March, bad things are going to happen even worse the next time around. Don't put yourself in that vote. Don't put our students in that vote. Don't put our teachers and staff in that vote. Thank you.
Mark Peters.
Hi, Mark Peters. This is Science Book Enders Prime in Centerville. I am a parent of two graduates from Centerville. So I no longer have students within the district. However, I find it very important that we continue to support the school. One of the reasons we moved here, what, I guess, 18 years ago now, was because of the school. Because of what Centerville offered. And the exact reason I was telling you to move to Oakland, spend your $20,000 a year on property tax, and go get your kids a college prep education. Everybody went to Oakland, looked around, and said, it's too sterile. I don't know what my kids want to be when they're five or eight years old. I don't know who they want to be. And when I walked through the halls of Centerville, I saw diversity. I saw a lot of really cool things going on. And the reality is, that can't stop. And so, I guess, one, I'm very thankful that you guys did go out and speak to the, like, last week, there were great sessions, and I went to the sessions. I think we're not asking for 4.5. You're not asking for 4.5 right now, I'm asking for 3.9. Do I wish 4.5 to a bright room? Absolutely. Because unfortunately, we live in a state that believes in defunding public schools. And that's just the reality of where we are. So you always have this potential for deficit spending down the river. And you can't manage your way out of this. I worked in G for many years. I now work within fintechs. The reality is, you can't manage your way out of this the way you manage a business. And so often, I hear people talk about, well, no, you just cut. Well, no, neither teachers. And we can't do it on the back of the teachers here, because the teachers are what is providing that to the students within the district. So, one, thank you very much for listening to the, listening to the public. Coming into 3.9, I hope that's where you guys land, because I don't want to see you devalue and defund the future education of the children of this sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we'll move on to Board Administrator Reports. Legislative.
The General, what? Oh, sorry, thanks, Megan. The General Assembly sent House Bill 68 to Governor Dewine for his action. The bill would prohibit certain procedures to alter E-minor child sex, and would designate this act as the Ohio Saving Adolescents from Experiment Act. The bill also includes House Bill 6, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act to require schools, state institutions of higher education, and private colleges to design separate single-sex teams and sports for each sex. The General Assembly sent Senate Bill 91 to Dewine for his action, though the bill makes changes to laws regarding fraud, waste, and abuse of public funds. The Senate unanimously passed Senate Bill 162, which would require public schools to provide certain academic intervention services to each student who demonstrates a limited level in math and/or English language arts. The Senate unanimously passed House Bill 101, which modifies the law regarding village dissolution and makes several education-related budget corrections. House and Primary and Secondary Education Committee amended and passed House Bill 312, sponsored by Representatives Andrea White from Kettering and Tom Young, Washington Township, and I added this in because these are our representatives, which would establish a regional partnership program. The program would require the Department of Education and Workforce, and the Department of Higher Education to create, administer, and oversee the prenatal-to-five early childhood post-secondary regional partnership program, and to make it an appropriation. The amendment makes it clear that participation in the program is not mandated. And finally, the State School Board appointed Paul Kraft, Superintendent of Buckeye Valley Local in Delaware, Ohio, as an ex-state Superintendent of Public Instruction. His, will begin his new post on January 1st. And that's the end of the report. Thank you.
And, student rep, I know there's no report tonight, correct? Or is there? Correct.
No reports.
You want to, just want to speak, or?
If you want to leave for Thomas.
Go right in.
All right, wait, Sam.
Go forward, Sam.
Thomas is over by. Hi, Thursday. Central School Board Analysis. Last week, my partner and I, Thomas Garcia, went to the Montgomery County Student Relocation Meeting, in which we met with the 15 other public schools, public districts, and we talked about issues that concern our education. Some of our big topics, or like, presenters we had, we had Ashley Marshall from Preschool Promise come and talk to us about the importance of pre-K and preschool in education, and how that can impact things such as the third grade reading levels, and how high students score on those tests, and how that will affect their future education, and so on and forth, and the importance of having proper classrooms for children, making sure that they can write, like, literacy or anything online. That's like, creating equity-friendly classrooms. And then, we met with Cara Hutchinson from SWEDA, in which they do, we technology training for teachers. And we didn't really get a clear example, like, what exactly, or how exactly teachers get this training, but typically, like, school districts break in partnerships with SWEDA to learn about, like, new technologies used in education and in the classroom. And finally, we learned about a lot of college financials and college advising from Ashley Overman, who works at the Montgomery County Education Department or building. And the big one was PASPA. As this year, this has changed, it will be opening somewhere around December 31st, and the entire form has changed, like, how your IRS, your community, or your parents, and whatnot. The big one was that our, we were showing a graph, and our stat showed that just about over 75% of the 2023 graduates of Central High School tied up for PASPA. And our big one was, because college can be so expensive, and a lot of people don't know about how expensive it can be, and how sometimes detrimental private loans can be to your credit, and your future, you want to get the window of that PASPA, and how helpful it is, and how important it is. So maybe we'll have a goal of 80%, or more. Good job, Sam.
Great job, Sam. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, on the agenda, eligibility date for change, date change for kindergarten students.
Public meeting that, in Ohio, school districts choose between August 1st and September 30th for the date that children are eligible for kindergarten once they have to turn five by that date. And so, for a number of years, Centerville's date has been September 30th. With collaboration with Mrs. Allen and Mrs. Klein and kindergarten teachers, we are proposing moving that date to August 1st. Our enrollment in young fives has been declining the last few years, and so that's putting lots of young children in regular kindergarten. And so, this is our proposal, that you'll be, have a resolution later in the meeting. Thank you.
All right, financial update, it's all yours.
So, good evening. Just to get started, I wanted to kind of go back and just share my recommendations as we move forward in the next steps with the Board of Education, with the levy. So in November, I'd asked the Board the opportunity to explore various options with staff and the community. I just want to say thank you. You provided that opportunity. We explored three levy options with the community, and we'll talk about that in detail here in just a minute. And we also had the opportunity to really look at the future election dates that are coming up, not only next year, but also in the spring of 2025. In the three weeks, we provided over 20 presentations to staff, to the community, and at board at a regular meeting. So, again, thank you for that opportunity. The timeline, I just kind of went through that timeline with you a little bit, and tonight, we're looking at, considering a resolution on how we move forward in March 2024. Five-year forecast, I felt like it was important to keep this in the slide. This is the same slide that we shared at all of our community presentations, as well as our staff presentations, and really, some of the same information we shared at our board meetings. In all the meeting presentations, we have shared the forecast, communicated the fact that the, that no new district revenue will be generated in 2024. Due to the level of the levy failure in November of this year, means that no new money will come into the district for the year 2024. So the need for additional funding doesn't go away. It's still there. We have implemented some immediate reductions. We've looked at those reductions, we've shared with the community some of those reductions as we move forward. Part of that is limiting new hires, really looking at current positions and putting a hold, reduce, or even looking at reducing positions based upon attrition, hiring staff at the lowest possible level with experience of step zero, planning for staff and program reductions as we move forward. In addition to that, we've really looked at limiting substitutes, especially for some of our classified positions with our secretaries, office aides, and custodians. And this kind of ties in with overtime as well, looking at reducing and limiting overtime. This does have an impact because of our custodial shortages that we've had for substitutes, for substitute custodians. We have our maintenance folks who'll come in, maybe work an hour, two hours in the evening, just to help get buildings ready, and we've limited some of that overtime due to the shortage of custodial subs. Maybe an even more impact in the future with special events that we have throughout the district. A lot of those events that take place here at the high school, and also with, you know, the weather and the cold and weather season coming up, and snow season, that may impact some of our overtime with our staff. We've talked about limiting field trips within our buildings, and it's just a way to get started on saving some money right now for the district. We've spent a lot of time talking about various options, looking at options A, which is a 3.9-mill operating levy, and a much reduced mileage than the levy that we put on the November 2023 ballot. But we also look at making some efficiencies through attrition, looking at our staff that's retiring and making those changes, and not bringing certain staff back or certain positions back, so that we can keep up and implement our strategic plan initiatives. Option B, similar, it's all operating money, a 3.5-mill operating levy. We look at budget and program reductions totaling $500,000 to $1 million, which we have about 10 to 15 staff positions. And that does not include the potential for efficiencies through attrition, so it'd be a combination of both. It's looking at making those 10 to 15 staff reductions in positions, and also looking at making some changes through attrition. Option C is very similar to Option B, but we added PI component to that. That's a combined 3.5-mill operating with 0.4-mill PI. Again, to get back to the operating reductions, we would have to look at $500,000 to $1 million in staffing, which would be about 10 to 15 positions, plus looking at efficiencies through attrition to implement that plan. And we've also had some conversations about Option D, what would happen if we don't go back in March, or if a levy would fail in March, what would happen? With options B, C, and D, obviously, will have the most impact on our classrooms. Efficiencies through attrition, again, would be part of those reductions, along with looking at reduced positions, especially if we don't go back in March, or if it doesn't pass in March. This is just a financial slide of March of 2024, Option A. Option A has the least impact on the classroom. The operating fund can be used for equipment costs, where the PI fund cannot be used for some of those operating expenses. So just some things to point out. You can see that we'd be deficit spending at the end of 2024 by $372,000. This would give us an opportunity to make some of those reductions through attrition, and save some money back to offset some of that deficit spending by the end of the fiscal year of '24 and '25 school year. I think it's important, too, to continue to share areas where we plan to make reductions. So without the additional funding in March, we need to look at considerations of $2 to $2.5 million in reductions for the '24, '25 school year. This would include approximately 30 to 35 staff positions, in addition to implementing reductions in all areas of our operation. So obviously, the district leadership team has been working on looking at some of the efficiencies, or areas that we can make reductions. Our plan is to submit a list to the board, a detailed list to the board in January, of what would take place and what we know at that time, as far as the reductions we can make through retirements, and also looking at long-term reductions if the levy wouldn't pass in March, and what that would mean for the district and for our community, and obviously for our staff. So tonight, it's my recommendation that we go back in March with Option A that I presented to the group. Option A is the 3.9-mill operating, for operating expenses only, and to be back on the ballot in March. So with that being said, is there any questions?
Could you go back to the Option A budget? So on the line, I know, I know it was brought up last time, just where it says, what is the required reductions? I know there's nothing there, and that was one of the questions. And again, I just want to read that statement. What is the required reduction? So there may not be any required reductions, but the plan is to still do reductions in staff, hopefully through attrition, and if need be, we would do other reductions. But with this, there's not required, but the intent is to still do those reductions, correct?
That's correct.
Any other comments on this? I know we discussed this.
I'd like that. Laura, can you explain in Option A what the estimated reduction that has been put into this budgeting piece is? What's the dollar amount you used as far as the attrition reduction to create this budgeting model for Option A?
We don't have any of those positions in there yet, because they're, they're just now starting to come in to us. And so, this is the option that we had presented at the community meetings. It's the option, it's the simulations that we've been showing to the staff over the last several weeks, couple of weeks. And at that point in time, like I said, there were very few, if any, retirements or resignations at that point. We don't, we don't want to change that information. So I think to Dr. Rohr's point, required reductions, no, but we will be able to add those reductions to this plan as they start to come in, and we determine that they won't, that they're positions that we don't need to replace for next year.
Okay.
Any else? Thank you, John. Next, Treasurers' recommendations. Consider approving the November 23 financial statements for monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $16,416.31.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following quarter education meetings, November 27, a regular meeting, and on the December 11th, the work session.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Superintendent recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A, recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommend the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommend the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extraduty assignments. Recommend the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E, for the reasons and on the dates given. You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for supplemental contracts or extraduty assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Same.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, the decision to the resolution submitting to the electors of the school district, the question of an additional 3.9-mill tax levy for the purpose of current expenses pursuant to Section 5705.21 of the Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
I just want to comment similar to what I said in the work session. It's in my opinion that this is the best option we have for our staff, for our school district, and for our community. Will give us an opportunity to go back to the community, more information regarding how the appraisals, recent reappraisals affected, will affect or won't affect their particular situation, have a better understanding of that. We know we need to get more information out about how levies even work, because there's a lot of misunderstanding about how that works. It gives us an opportunity to convince our community that it's in everyone's best interest that this levy pass, a 3.9-mill levy. So I really believe this is the best option for everybody concerned.
I believe that, I will restate what I stated an hour ago, that I've always believed that the biggest asset that the community has are our employees, and I believe that Option A gives us the best opportunity to keep our employees, which I think is in the best interest of the community. And as a school board, one of our jobs is to make sure that we have enough money to operate the school district. And I agree with John that I believe that Option A is the only and the best choice for the community.
I, Option A is not my, not my choice. I would really like to see us have more, to show the community as far as what we've done as cuts. It does, it is encouraging to me that this budgeting piece that I'm looking at doesn't even include what we are expecting in attrition, because that is an unknown, which makes the numbers in the yellow line, is it still up there? Yeah. In the yellow line, improve even that much more. I would much prefer an Option B or C, simply because I think the need is there, and I think the community by and large recognizes that the need is there, but we need to meet them halfway. I don't think anybody wants to see reductions from our staff. You know, our staff, like Jeff said, perfectly, they are our greatest asset, and we need, we need our excellent staff to run and create a good product. our excellent staff to run and create a good product, which is what we're all up here for, and we're all up here because we love the district. Nobody wants to see that happen. I am concerned that if we don't get it right in March, it's going to be bad, and we're going to further the divisions in the community. So I don't love option A.
You don't have to say anything.
I like C, but just so the community knows, we can use, you know, that money for PI projects as well. So I can support A. I like C better, but I can support A.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Now.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. All right, that resolution passes. Next, Consider Resolution to Change Kindergarten Eligibility Date for Central City Schools' Students to August 1st of each year.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Consider Approving the Following Transportation Items. Acceptance of Transportation Responsibilities for the '23, '24 school year from the district and for the students listed.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Consider Resolution Approving the Following Revised Board of Education Policies. I know everyone's anxious for me to read every single word of the agenda, and that is not going to happen.
Aw, come on.
So we'll take those. If you'd like to do it as well.
No, 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 no.
All right. So approve those listed on the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes. Next, Final Comments About the Central City Schools from the Board of Education. We do have some business tonight, and that is to say goodbye for the sitting here at this agenda for Mr. Schreier. So we're going to have you come on up.
What?
Schreier. Come on up to the podium. It's not like you haven't been here before.
Are you serious?
Yes, go.
I'm going to ask you to dance or anything.
Thank you. Cheryl will be very glad for that.
But you have to give a speech.
You almost need to give a speech.
Don't worry, man. So needless to say, this is his last meeting tonight, as you can tell by the massive smile on his face. So Jeff, when you joined the Board sixteen years ago, you were, well, younger, a lot younger. Like the rest of us, you joined for the right reasons, to care about families in our community, to care about the staff in our buildings, but most of all, to care about the students, all the students in our district. You have achieved all of those things, Jeff. There's no bigger cheerleader in this district than you. You're a coach and a mentor for many students, especially as a DI coach. He was actually a coach for my daughter's team, and just so you know, Jeff, you still need to come over and clean the paint off my garage floor. Your achievements and accomplishments can be seen by many people, and you have touched many, many people. Sometimes it doesn't seem that way as we're up here and we hear things, but the reality is you've touched a lot of students, and I know they're very appreciative of that. Your achievements and accomplishments can be seen by many people. We've asked your wife, Cheryl, what you might want as a departing gift. She suggested a collage of all the other past board members that you served on, and John and I talked about it, and I didn't think you'd want to see sixteen pictures of John and I. So we decided that was probably not what you were going to do. Instead, we decided on one other gift. So we got you this, first of all. I'm going to let you, actually, I can open it up. So we know that Jeff is very much into, what, what's your, what do you like taking pictures of?
Bridges, yeah.
Bridges. So we had, I got for you this picture.
Oh, my God.
Do you have this one?
No.
Well, this is a picture, it's not one-covered bridge, but a triple-covered bridge.
It's the wide bridge in Zane.
Wide building bridge. It's from 1909. Jeff took this picture.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding. All right. And so we got it framed for you, and it says, Jeff Schreier, sixteen years of dedicated service to Central City Schools.
Thank you.
We thought you'd like this more than the picture of John and I. We also have a card from all of us with another gift in there for you to enjoy. Jeff, thank you for all the years of service.
Thank you.
Seriously. You'll be missed.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.